I've lost. I lost my agenda. There it is. And just so, just to be clear, we do not have an exec session tonight, right? No need. All right, getting the, getting the thumbs down, no exec session, so we can just really move right into it. Do recognize the quorum. We have nothing to vote on yet, so no roll call yet, but I see a quorum. And I think, and there's no modifications to the agenda. We're going to hear from Dr. Brown and Amanda in a little bit, but right now we have public comment period. And Tricia, I do believe we had two folks at least had signed up to speak, and this is their opportunity to do that.
Yes, Rob. First up, we have Jessa Doria.
Hello, everybody. Okay. Ah ha, okay. Sorry about that. I just had to figure out how that was working. Can everybody hear me? Okay, thanks. Yeah, I've seen some of you before. Thanks for listening to me again. My name's Jessa Doria. I'm a nurse and a mother of two girls ages six and 10 who attend Northeast Elementary School. They attended in person last year and this year as well, and I've been really grateful for that. We've all heard recently in the news that many neighboring states have rescinded COVID restrictions for schools, including masks. I heard our own district has moved to drop outdoor masking starting February 28th. Data shows the risk of outdoor transmissions less than 1%, so I'm grateful for this step in the right direction. It would appear that there's a good chance our governor will rescind masks and other restrictions for New York schools within the next month or so. She's also indicated she may leave certain decisions up to local school districts. Beyond masking, there are many other changes that have made to the normal school experience. Lunchtime, group projects, extracurricular activities, school assemblies, school trips, parent teacher conferences, parents being allowed into the school, et cetera. I would still like to respectfully ask this governing body for some kind of a timeline for an offer to these restrictions and whether our district in fact intends to rescind these should the governor give us the green light. I want to read a quote from former CDC Director Tom Frieden. He writes in January 2022, quote, "Eighteen months ago, it was irresponsible and wrong to say COVID is similar to the flu. Many people who are hospitalized and dying have positive tests but are not sick from COVID, and it's more important, most important to protect the vulnerable, but Omicron is different. Now these statements are basically correct. COVID is adapting to us. We need to adapt," end quote. Many doctors agree with Dr. Frieden. Some of them have put together a website called The Urgency of Normal, which provides a lot of information about the low risk of COVID to children, the incredible effectiveness of vaccines, the unintended and often devastating consequences of our COVID policies on the health and wellbeing of kids, the lack of good data to support masking in schools, and the ways that we can continue to protect the vulnerable among us. It's worth checking out if you haven't already, urgencyofnormal.com. We can lift restrictions for the many and take specific measures to protect the vulnerable. It's not a choice between doing everything to prevent COVID infections and doing nothing. There is a middle ground. We have a lot of tools in our toolbox after two years. Vaccinations, high-quality masks for targeted at-risk groups, EvoSheld, which is a medication to prevent infections in immunocompromised people, the increased availability of rapid tests, newer post-infection treatments like Paxlovid. Folks, focus protection works. It's how we've managed other respiratory viruses for high-risk individuals for decades. And I'll just end with some thoughts about masks. Most other countries do not mask children under 12. The WHO never recommended masking for under five and advises masking six to 11 only under certain circumstances. In the U.S., we mask down to age two. Nobody in the world does that or has done that at any point in the pandemic. In Europe, they're baffled by our decision to mask preschoolers. The evidence around masking children involves solely low-quality retrospective data with many confounding variables. When opinions are heavily loaded, as they are with the issue of masking schoolchildren, you really need robust studies with good evidence. You need randomized control trials. We don't have that in this case. After two years of living with COVID, we have zero randomized control trials on masking schoolchildren. In science, the burden of proof is on those who want to implement the intervention. Burden is not on those of us who think it's important to see faces. If we're going to continue to do something so drastic for so long to so many children, we really need to prove with good hard data that the intervention works and the benefits outweigh the risks to children. So I'm asking you all where you stand on this issue and what is your plan for scaling back all of these interventions? Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Jessa. Tricia, go ahead with the next.
Apologies if I mispronounce your name. Sarah Germanprey.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, and there's the video.
We can see you. That's great.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. My name is Sarah Germanprey, and I'm a mother of two as well, also at Northeast. I have to say, I want to speak on the same issue that Jessa just spoke at. And I, we're not coordinated at all, but I have to say I second every single thing that she just said. I appreciate her perspective as a nurse and as a mother. I guess I just wanted to add one, a couple of things to what she said. You know, as we know, the CDC and New York State are likely to drop masking guidelines for kids shortly. And I guess my question is, what then is the justification for Tompkins County to keep ours? We're one of the highest vaccinated counties in the country. We have one of the lowest hospitalization rates in the country. So while the rest of the nation is modifying their policies and reducing the amount of masking, what justifies, what's the rational basis for Tompkins County to have some of the strictest masking requirements potentially at that point? Something to think about. And why, you know, why are governments across the country and as Jessa pointed out around the world, either dropping these masking requirements for children or have never implemented them in their, in the first place? And I think it's because of this recognition of the downsides of masking. And I don't think that there's been enough of that recognition in our conversations, you know, as a country and locally. I know a lot of people say, oh, masks don't bother me. There's, you know, what's the big deal? And I accept that that could be true for some people, but that's certainly not true for everybody. So we have this very wide net that we're casting that's, that's inhibiting and causing issues for some people, not for everyone. For example, you know, I have two kids. One, and I see the difference between just the two of them and how they're responding to masking. One of them is very outgoing and gregarious and social, and he's able to get his point across regardless of what, what's on his face. And the other one is pretty shy and soft-spoken, and I see it all the time in society. People, they don't know what he's saying. They can't hear him. He's not speaking up loud enough. He's not being heard. We're new, so he's trying to make friends right now. We're new to town. And it's just, it's not easy anyway. And then, you know, the sense of isolation that just gets layered on top of that when you feel like you can't communicate with the people around you. It's hard. It does, it does have a downside. Okay, and we need to, we need to recognize that. I wonder about people with speech issues, with speech, speech pathologies. I had a neighbor kid say he didn't want to take his mask off because he's insecure about showing his mouth. He doesn't like the way his mouth looks. You know, there, there are, there are social and psychological downsides to the masking. On the WHO's website, they cite that as the, one of the reasons why they've never recommended masking for kids five and under. These social and psychological downsides and, and the inhibition to learning. I am an educator myself, and I've witnessed it in the classroom that it's, it's difficult to communicate. It just makes communication really hard when you can't see anybody's mouth and, you know, you can't project. So at this point, I think the debate is, should people have a choice? We're reading a lot about the, the effectiveness of one-way masking when equipped with an N95, which we now have, which we didn't have at the beginning of the pandemic. So, you know, for those who are concerned, by all means, like support should be, be given and acceptance of whatever the family's choice is for those who, who have extenuating circumstances. They should have that choice. We're not saying, I don't think we should, we should be arguing that, that masks are forbidden or masks are mandatory. It's, it should be a choice at this point. So those are my comments. I thank you guys for this forum and for the opportunity to be heard. So thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate it. Tricia, is there anyone else that you're aware of that wants to speak?
Yes. Yes. Up next, we have Karina Lockenhoff.
Okay, is this working? Yes, thank you. Thank you for taking my comment. I'm a parent with children in middle and high school, and I'd like to speak in favor of keeping the indoor mask mandate for the school district, even if the mask requirement is dropped by New York State. Now, it's true, the local rates are currently lower than during the Omicron wave, but the current level of transmission is still ranked as high. Also, the science tells us that Omicron is not likely to be the last wave. The BA2 variant of Omicron is 30% more transmissible, and some evidence suggests it may be more severe as well. BA2 is currently sweeping through places like Denmark and Hong Kong, and the latest data suggests that people can get reinfected with BA2 even if they had the original Omicron. Vaccinations can protect against the most severe outcomes of COVID, but they don't protect students and staff who are immunocompromised. Also, children under five can't get vaccinated yet. If COVID is spreading in schools, it poses a risk for younger siblings and for the young children of teachers and staff. COVID is airborne, and well-fitting, high-quality masks play a key role in prevention. I'm happy to come back next week and provide you with some data on the effectiveness of masks. However, masks work best if everyone, masks work best if everyone is wearing them. There are no N95s for younger children. Also, if masks are optional, those who still wear them because their loved ones are vulnerable will face stigma. As of January 6th of this year, the American Academy of Pediatrics strongly recommends that anyone over the age of two, regardless of vaccination status, bears a well-fitting mask when in public. Yes, masks can be annoying, and for my work as an emotion researcher, I actually study emotion recognition as part of my work. I know that masks make it more difficult to understand emotions. However, recent research shows that such effects are strongest for infants and preschoolers, and they level off in school-aged children. In fact, people are surprisingly accurate in reading emotions if they just see the eyes. In fact, it seems that some of the emotion recognition deficits in autism are because people are not looking enough at eyes. So at this point in the pandemic, there are two options. We can pretend that we're able to go back to the old maskless normal, but this means that we'll encounter a whiplash of disruptions every time there's a new variant in town. It also means that we're not meeting the needs of the most vulnerable members of our school community. Alternatively, we can keep the masks for now, minimize disruptions to learning and protect the vulnerable until we can vaccinate children under five, until we have a universal COVID vaccine. Walter Reed is testing one right now, and until effective medications like Paxlovid are widely available and approved for children. So far, the district has done very well by making decisions based on science. I hope that you will keep up that pattern and keep the masks for now. Thank you so much.
Anyone else, Tricia?
No, that's it.
We're good. Thank you all. Thank you, Tricia. Board responses at this point?
I don't have a response. I just want to thank everyone for sharing. We are taking everything into account. I don't want to speak for the administrators or the superintendent, but thank you for your time.
I would just, I would just like to add that it has never been the school board that has decided on masking policies or, or any of the other precautions that we have taken over the years. The administration has worked with state and local health officials. They have followed state mandates, and they have evaluated the situation as it has arisen. I know that none of us, yesterday was my grandson's second birthday. He was born three weeks before lockdown, so I've plotted this all out quite a bit. Yes, there's have been some very tough times, but we have gotten through this amazingly healthy. And, but in addition to being a highly vaccinated community, we are also a community where people come to us at various times of the year from all over the country and all over the world. And we're very lucky that the people who come to us are almost uniformly, to stay, are almost uniformly vaccinated. And we've had very low transmission rates, but we didn't have low transmission rates right before Christmas when Omicron tore through. And we were very lucky that that was not a virulent variant, but there are, there are variants. So I would, I would urge the administration to continue to follow local, state, and national health officials. And since it is going to be a localized decision, I personally am not going to try to overrule our health experts.
Kelly, did you want to?
Yeah. So first of all, I wanted to thank Jess, Sarah, and Karina. This whole pandemic has been so frustrating. One, I, I personally can't wait until it's over, as I'm sure everybody else. It's frustrating to have to look at my fellow board members and the administration from a computer screen as opposed to in person. It makes it much more difficult to communicate. When we think one strain is gone and we're in the clear, the next one pops up. And you just never know how it's going to hit anybody. I agree, we have to look at several variables. You know, I, I'm very lucky in that I don't think my son will ever take his mask off because that's just who he is, and it doesn't seem to bother him. But I also recently have been hit with a COVID death in my family. And it's not an easy thing. It's not an easy situation. Looking at it and listening to the various arguments for and against because it, it changes from family to family as to what your, your preferences are and what your beliefs are. So God bless the people that have to make these decisions at the government, state, and local levels because I don't think I could. But I do greatly appreciate that our, that our parents and that our local healthcare workers come on, give us their, their research and their input, and it does help when we're trying to make our decisions. So thank you for showing up tonight.
Other responses, if you wish. And we're going to get to students shortly, so I think you might as well just go ahead and do your comments, responses to this if you wish, and then blow into your, whatever else you want to talk about. So go with board members. Any other board members want to speak now, and then we can roll to the student reps. Well, thanks, everybody. I said it last time, you know, that's, we are going to be in a world where mandates will go away, and eventually there will be, everyone will have a choice. You can, you can be masked forever if that is what you feel is the best for you and your family. And to expect others to be masked forever is unrealistic. And whenever timeframe, we finally get to the point where the county, county Board of Health says, okay, you don't have to be masked. So I think it's, we're going to be in a hybrid world, and that will happen at some point. And, and there's arguments on both sides, and so that's the future as I see it. And just trying to be realistic about what we can expect from folks. But we appreciate everyone coming and speaking. And so now, student reps, go ahead and lead off with whoever wants to chime in. I'm mainly seeing Ifa Gahai, so the guy, feel free to go ahead, and I'm not sure I'm seeing LACSS.
Yeah, I don't see LACSS, but hi, I'm Aton. I'm a student rep for the guy's school. Originally, the, our fellow student rep cadet couldn't be here tonight. But yeah, here we go. So IHS students are currently enjoying their February break and are looking forward to continuing, continuing their semester next week. Prior to the break, students were given two free rapid tests by administrators in each courtyard for the purpose of ensuring that COVID was not spread during break and not brought back to the classroom when we return next week. It's great to see that COVID safety is continuing to be taken seriously, even during a period when COVID cases in Tompkins County are lower than they were before. Also, the student reps will be working closely with Mr. Trumbull, the principal of IHTC High School, and other IHS admin to build a new schedule for the 2022-2023 school year. Members from other student leadership groups such as IRIS and Student Council will also work with us and the administration to optimize, to create a schedule that is optimal for students, and that might include a universal one. So all students have the ability to eat lunch, and they don't have to like work lunch into their school schedules.
Okay. Oh, wow. It's been a while since I've done this online. But discussion around sexual harassment and assault at school is continuing at IHS. I and a couple of IHS students who are part of Team Council met with the advocacy center, Ms. Talta and Ms. Grover, who are both here, by the way. Thank you for leading the discussion to plan out future steps for awareness and prevention. Team Council will hopefully be collaborating with IHS to provide trainings for students in creating affirmative and safe spaces for the LGBTQ community. Another initiative that is planned is that there are cards in classrooms that outline steps to take in emergencies like a fire drill or a lockdown drill, and it would be extremely beneficial if there was a clear plan for teachers when a student comes to them about an incident such as legal steps responding in an affirming manner and clarifying their goal. The students are also planning to make an IHS Connects video about sexual harassment, sexual harassment and assault to spread awareness throughout the school. It is incredibly important to continue this discussion to create a safe and comfortable environment for everybody. And I look forward to seeing new and updated policies and initiatives take place at ICSD.
Another topic that has been on a lot of high schoolers' minds, and especially some of the seniors recently, is voting rights. Some of us seniors, myself included, have turned 18 and are excited to be able to vote in elections across the board this year. Out of all elections that we have the right to vote in, perhaps the most important and the one that directly affects high school is the most, is the election for Board of Education members, which occurs in May every year. In the last decade or so, there have been many local as well as larger movements to expand the right to vote to 16 and 17-year-olds. We believe that if 16 and 17-year-olds should be able to vote in any election, it should be for our Board of Education. Ideally, we'd all be in person to discuss this in depth. However, clearly, that's not the case today. We're online and any of us on vacation. So this is essentially me saying that this is a topic that we are researching and would like to explore more in depth along with the board. You know, we would appreciate if the board would explore this proposition with us and for us to engage in a discussion of it in the next in-person meeting where we may have all of the student representatives present.
Is that everybody? Embrace, I'm with you. I much prefer to meet in person and look forward to, when we're not on vacation, it's an accommodation for those folks that are, yeah, okay, and some people are on vacation, some people are working. Yeah, some like me. But anyway, I don't want to dwell on that. Board responses to student reps?
Okay, I'll go. Grace, as to policy having to do with sexual harassment, that's something that the Policy Committee is working on. And if I recall properly, our next Policy Committee meeting, which will be the first Tuesday in March, will be devoted to the set of policies that have to do with, with sexual harassment. And so anybody wants to tune into that, and anybody who wants to look at what we currently have, those policies can be found in Board Docs. And off the top of my head, because I'm not Sean, I can't give you the numbers of those policies. But if you search in Board Docs, I think you will, you will find them, both by searching Title IX and sexual harassment. I think you'll find those policies. And then Adam, very interested in what you raised about expanding voting rights. And I'm wondering as if you and the student reps or other students have already begun an exploration, if you have any articles or materials that you could share with us, you know, before we talk about this at a meeting, that would be appreciated.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have any collected right now, but I would be happy to collect some over the next few days and send them in email or whatever other medium to the board.
Great. That'd be good.
My, my question about that specifically is whether we have any authorization to change voting laws in New York.
Right. So I don't really know either. I assume that would be more something that's up to the local Board of Elections. However, we also do have a legislative advocacy committee that might be able to play a large role in that.
And just to clarify, right now, only 18 plus can vote. Is that correct?
Yes.
The legal, the legal voting age is 18, and you must be registered and a resident. And it is, there are no restrictions that are any different on any election. So I am, I am skeptical that our board can could make a change like that.
But it is, it is something that we can look into and see what, there is obviously state election laws and how that, you know, affects what we do. And so we can, we can look into it, and laws are made to be broken or changed, maybe. Which, which word more is changed?
Laws are meant to adapt.
Oh, thanks.
I like that.
It's interesting that if I recall correctly, when I was 20, the, the voting age, and this was nationally, was 21. And then it was changed. And I believe I, whenever it was changed, I didn't actually get to vote until I was 21. So even though the, the law had been changed by the time I, it, it got changed, I was 21 and I voted in my, my first elections. And it was my understanding that it was federal law. Now, what Pat said is generally true about that, the consistency of voting laws about who's eligible. I discovered a few years ago that I thought, based on something that I had read, that a green card holder could vote in some elections. And so I was telling my green card holder friend Lucy that she could vote in the school board election. It turned out that she couldn't, that green card holders were banned. So, you know, there are nuances of the law, but I certainly that green card holders were banned. So, you know, there are nuances of the law, but I certainly and as Adam said, you know, we do have a Legislative Advocacy Committee. And I'd be really interested in reading about and, and discussing, you know, about what would be the rationale for advocating for changing the, the legal age for voting.
And Maura, not to get lost in all this, but we are of a certain age and the idea was if you're old enough to be drafted to go to Vietnam, you're probably old enough to vote.
Yeah, that was certainly.
There was that kind of thing going on. So the age was reduced by, if my math is right, by three years. So laws are made to be broken, Maura. So.
I will share that I was, I was seventeen when the voting age changed, but it changed during a presidential election year. So I still couldn't vote for the candidate of my choice until I was, I was twenty-one.
Right. So we were demonstrating to the students how we can get off topic and lost in the discussion, but we like our discussions. That's why we like to meet together, Grace, and because it's the interplay. That's how we well, that's how we move forward. So speaking of moving forward, that's a segue. I do that too. But if we're, if we're good, we'll, we'll go to consent agenda and there are some.
Rob, can I add one thing?
Oh, please do, please do, Nicole.
I just wanted to make a comment to Adam Aton and Grace that though this year, we're not going to make any type of legislative changes, that doesn't mean that you all can't hold voter drives at the school and get all of your friends that are seventeen, eighteen years old to the school board, to the board, to whatever school they, they vote at to get them registered to vote for the upcoming election. So I think civic engagement is really important and getting people to the polls is important. Grace, thank you for continuing with your leadership and advocacy of student experiences and meeting with Lily to talk about sexual harassment and just being safe and how we can keep each other safe.
Thank you, Nicole. That's an even better segue to, to the.
Well, Rob, I just wanted to say two things.
Chris, go ahead.
Well, thank you. One, I wanted to thank Grace, one, for just pushing forward and sharing it and and sharing the knowledge and information that needs to be heard from, you know, to our student body. But also I wanted to kind of segue to Adam. Also, there's an opportunity to share information about the wave of voter oppression that's going on across the country and how important it is to vote and educate yourself, yourself on the voting process and how important it is. And I hope that's not lost in, in this whole process. So thank you.
In, in fact, it was what spurred us to want to take action on this. Yeah, that's, that's definitely something that is on a lot of our minds as a primary concern in our country. And yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, thanks, everyone. And one last comment from the sixties, we also grew up in an era when you never trusted anyone over thirty, Maura, right? So I just say, I don't trust the government. You never trust anybody over thirty. So but with that, let's, let's go on to consent agenda and we can move and move and second that, answer any questions, Chris, that folks may have.
I will move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Same by Maura. Any, any items, Chris, or anyone?
There's a few things out there. Five point one is the corrective action from the audit. Just really boils down to how different of our, how some of our buildings are procedures. And then you'll look at managing different screens. I apologize. There is the RIC with BOSIS, and that's just an ongoing contract with the Board Resolution that we do annually. No, it's actually it's a five-year, sorry, five-year contract. And that's in there. We have budget revenue with, not sorry, I P I, which seems to be on every consent agenda. And then the Treasures Report from December.
Thanks, Chris. We went through it all in finance and you covered it well. So if there's no other questions, pausing. Okay, Tricia, go ahead and call the roll.
Rob Ainsley.
Yes.
Kelly Evans.
Yes.
Eldred Harris.
Yes.
Nicole LaSaeve.
Yes.
Maura Lang.
Yes.
Chris Malcolm.
Yes.
Patricia Waslow.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for, thanks for coming together tonight. It is vacation week, but there's a lot going on and an opportunity, Dr. Brown, to talk about a few things before we let folks go. So we're going to talk about the budget, which is front of mind these days, but Dr. Brown, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Ainsley. And that will be brief with one quick announcement and clarification before inviting Ms. Verba to come to talk about budget a little bit. At post break, we will be coming back and we will be relaxing the outdoor mask mandate. We put that information out. We just want to make sure everyone heard that. That was in a close collaboration with our local health department. As we've learned and have been told that there has been very little evidence of any outdoor transmissions here and elsewhere. So we are relaxing the outdoor masking requirement. And again, consultation with our medical director and health experts. And as always, we will continue to monitor the health data and the guidelines. And if there are shifts that need to be made, we will be making those shifts. But just want to make sure that word was out there. And with that, I would ask and invite Ms. Verba to the stage if we can transition to the business side and we will get folks moving.
I am here and I'm ready to go. Thanks, Dr. Brown. Appreciate it. And I will try to be as brief as I can. Tricia is going to be projecting the presentation for folks to refer to as needed after, you know, this, this talk about sort of where we are. So it's the end of February. And we know that we've had already a couple of Finance Committee meetings, specifically two Tuesdays ago, I believe, where it was just, it was really fantastic. Chris, I have to say thank you so much for, for facilitating that meeting. Tricia, if you want to go to the next slide, you can see the calendar that I'm talking about. We had three major presentations that evening. We had our colleagues from T S T BOSIS present about the administration budget for BOSIS. We had the Transportation Department come and speak about not only their budget, but also the utilization of the reserve, the capital reserve. And then finally, Dr. Dan Bryman spoke about the facilities budget and some projects also that might be happening. And so there's a lot of information that was shared at those meetings and the next Finance Committee will be in March fifteenth. And we're going to have another, again, three topics. And so I look forward to that time where we can really dig deeply into the budget lines. Tonight, we're going to just stay very, very sort of just sort of kind of upper tier, kind of looking at some of the budget drivers, just so we can get a glimpse of some of the areas of the budget that we, as exec team and budget stakeholders are going to be focusing on. So Tricia, we're going to start with that next slide. If you don't mind. And so that's the instruction. So this is the biggest driver, right, of our budget. It is, it is all of the professional instructional staff that do the amazing work every day. It also includes some administration of those programs and all the wonderful things that create sort of the experience for a whole child, right? And so as you can see, you know, we have factors that drive this, this kind of group of budget lines every year. And we create new positions. We have new positions that we needed to address COVID with. We have bargain agreements where we give people salary increases, right? And so those are all built into this. And then supplies and equipment also go up year to year. So this is the largest portion of our budget by far, and it is the most people and it is, I would argue, the most important piece. And so you can notice on top, we're still saying in progress. The reason why I'm talking about that is in progress is because we are still doing some work around what are sort of one-time costs that were related to COVID that we need to actually call out and move over to Special Aid Fund? And some, and all the other things that need to be remaining, remaining in the budget for the general fund that were created with federal dollars, but we need to sustain. So this one, we're, we really, there's, you know, probably thousands of line items for, for this grouping. And so we're doing a lot of work with that. Tricia, with the next slide, if you don't mind. This is the benefits that go along with the people, right? And so, so as you can see, this, this is another large portion. We're talking, you know, almost forty million dollars in benefits. But we've done a really good job of sort of looking at how we budget this. This includes health insurance, which does get transferred over to another fund, but we actually track it here and we'll show you. This is what we believe the costs will be. And again, as we do more cleanup with the, sort of the people's side of the budget, the benefit side will also be sort of moved around a bit. But we're pretty close to final with these, this, this category of the budget. Tricia, the next one, please. Thank you. So this is the BOSIS area. So BOSIS is both the administration budget, right, which is sort of their costs, their overhead to run the program, but also it's all the services that they provide. And BOSIS really does so many more things than what's listed here, but these are sort of the highlights that we all know. But they also do things like our health and safety and our waste management and, you know, consulting with us. They were just on a call with us with L A C S on some solar thoughts. So really, this, this captures a lot of the services that we have with them. We budget for BOSIS. It doesn't mean that we always spend everything, right? Because BOSIS evolves as we evolve, we increase and decrease programming needs with them. And so this is what our budget is. These are all moment in time studies. So this is what we believe we're going to be budgeting for the BOSIS programming moving forward. And you'll see that's just shy of four percent increase. Next slide, Tricia. Thanks. Transportation. So this is really based on what Liz Burner, the Director of Transportation, presented at the Finance Committee. And again, if you, you know, you wanted to tune in on that, we try to post all of the videos and all of the information that's shared right there on the website. It's the budget portion of the website. You can also get to the website through the Business Services area, so it should be easy to find. And as you can see with transportation, there's a lot of increases to cost. If you are paying more at the gas tank, so are we. And so we, you know, we were surprised to look at when you start to budget and try to predict just the cost of keeping our fleet on the road, the increases to the tire costs and, and all of the contracted services. I mean, this is, this is definitely an area that we are watching. And we want to make sure that we build enough into that budget area to cover those costs. This is also the staff as well. And so as you all know, we're, we're wrapping up negotiations with the Employees Association, and this will also cover that. Our next slide, Tricia, is our operations and maintenance area. So that is, as you notice, as well in progress. We anticipate that a lot of the costs that are allocated right now in this area of the budget will be moved over to the Special Aid Fund because there are a number of areas of this budget that are one-time costs that are related to COVID or that we feel have sort of a short-term element to them, maybe a year or two more that we're going to need these. And maybe we can like, you know, purchase ahead, like supplies and, and materials that we might need to address some of our needs. So so we're, we're watching this one as well and also working to dig a little deeper. One of the pieces of this budget also includes some of the transfers to the capital fund. And that literally what it is, we're transferring money from the general fund over to the capital fund. And when you see the word capital, that always means it's something about the building, related to the building. And this, for the past couple of years and moving forward, we want to be able to address the removal of those partitions, those electric partitions that had been in our gymnasiums across the district. We really identified those as a health and safety issue. And so again, we're going to be picking another building where we're going to be removing those, installing a draw behind curtain, maybe resurfacing the gymnasium floor, maybe putting in some mats around, maybe replacing basketball hoops. So we just want to make sure that the public understands that that is one hundred thousand dollars of this budget itself is related to the capital outlay funds. And so that would be in the general fund. Thank you, Tricia. The next one is another type of interfund transfer. And that is toward the end of our budget, you typically will see transfers that will go to both pre-K and the food services. Food services is a standalone program. And they oftentimes find that at the end of the year, they struggle to bring in enough revenue, especially during COVID, to be able to pay for all of the staff and the benefits that they have to run a huge district-wide program as throughout the summer, including school year. And so we do put aside money to transfer that over to their budget as needed. So then that way we can, you know, meet all of the requirements for payroll and that everybody gets paid and everybody gets their benefits. And that we do, we do feel that that's a good utilization of the general fund. And then also the pre-K program, we do get monies for those grant monies, local monies, but it's not enough to run the program that we want to run, the robust program that we offer. And so we also set aside funds in the general fund and we transfer for those over to the pre-K in the Special Aid Fund as well. So Tricia, the next one is debt service. So debt service is past and current debt. And that really what it is. It is, it is monies that we've borrowed that we pay principal and interest, just like a mortgage, to be able to do all the capital work that, that you have seen and that you are seeing now. So we we have secured funding through banks, through loans, to be able to pay off the, all the work, the capital work that we've done over the course of, you know, usually about thirty years. And so this debt service is on a schedule. We actually work with a fiscal advisor group to be able to track all the different types of financing that we've received over the years, track the principal and interest payments. And then we chart that from the past into the future. And we try to keep this specifically about seven percent of our total budget. So what we'll do, we think that this is final right now, but we always have the opportunity to pay more principal or interest if we want to in any given year to align that with that seven percent of the total budget. So that's again, a very, very high level overview of the expenditures. So those are, that's not all the expenditures, but a lot of the important drivers of the budget. You saw a lot of big ticket items, a lot of large numbers making up the expenditures. We are hoping to get you a, like a detailed line item report of the expenditures by the next board meeting. And that's our goal, even if it's draft, because we want to be able to put into the board's hands at least for two board meetings and a couple of Finance Committee meetings, you know, that, that, that budget document of the expenditure so that when we go and present our final budget to you in early April, you are confident about what those numbers mean, that you're able to educate the public as you're going out and doing all of our our budget and, and board sessions around the budget vote and, and the board seats. And so we just want to make sure that everybody's prepared and that the community has ample opportunity to ask us questions and make sure that we catch everything that we really are funding the things that we've identified as the priorities that we need moving forward. So you can't have expenditures without the revenue to pay for them. And so we've been talking a lot at a number of board meetings and at Finance Committee meetings about the transferring of the federal dollars over to Special Aid funds, which means that we actually can't use them in our budget to allocate them for the programming that we know is important. We want to continue. We know right now preliminarily, and you can see the draft across this sheet, what our state aid is. I, March first, will be submitting our tax formula, our tax cap formula, and the amount that we've calculated for that formula. We also know that we reviewed fund balance the last time we were together, and we know that we have fund balance and reserves to cover any challenges that we might face in revenue, real revenue coming in. We did also put in another estimated amount of money that we have available to us if the board decides to actually hold the tax rate flat, which is the amount of money that every single taxpayer, business owner pays per thousand of assessed value. And if we hold that flat, we actually, this year, our assessed value for the entire community is going up so much that if we held that flat, you can see we'll be bringing in more than four million dollars more if we chose to do that. So Dr. Brown, I don't know if you wanted to comment on that, but I know that we wanted to try to summarize this in an easy way to kind of start the thinking and start the conversation, if not tonight, you know, maybe in the future meetings. So then that way people have information available to them.
Yes, thanks, Ms. Verba. And I do wish to engage the board, we wish to engage the board in additional conversations about tax rate and the implications for our community. We've done, from our perspective, an outstanding job at the governor's team over the last decade to lower our tax rate significantly each, most, almost every year. So to avoid the kind of So to avoid the kind of funding cliff that we experienced about eight or nine years ago, and some of the other challenges around our funding request, we want to engage in a conversation about how to use our, to refer to the tax rate. Keep our tax rate flat, which will allow for us to bring in additional revenue if we were able to go past what has been deemed as a tax, tax levy formula. So that may not make sense to many folks in the public right now, but over the years, we've been talking a lot about tax levy. I'm hoping that we can shift our conversation to tax rate and utilize that approach to benefit both our community and our school district.
I would have a couple of questions about that. First of all, the the tax cap is still in effect, the two percent or whatever it is. So would a budget based on the tax rate require a sixty percent super majority?
Yes, it would require, exceeding the tax cap formula, it would require the sixty percent. However, which is new, there are no longer the penalties to taxpayers that we previously were negotiating. So I think was it a star reimbursement we blew? There's some other implications if we went over. Those have since been removed.
The second comment that I want to make is that when the tax, when we're working on the tax levy formula, the tax rate goes down, that means the tax burden on individual homeowners often goes down, even if it's only a little bit. If we're working on the tax rate, nobody is ever assessed at a lower rate, which means no one's ever going to see lower taxes in this community. And a lot of individuals are going to suffer significant increases.
Yeah, that's the conversation we need to engage in. And I think Amanda's taken it down. There's a slide there, you know. We we had to exceed the tax levy what, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, because we were unable to go to fund balances to the extent we needed to. And we were having a funding cliff based on federal funds being removed. We're approaching a similar situation. And it's going to be up to us to talk about how do we avoid the kind of tax rate and tax levy increases that were significant, coupled with staffing reductions, coupled with multiple years of not being able to address salaries. So we are trying to be planful and think about this years in advance. So again, that's the conversation we need to have over the next couple of, not a couple, the next couple of months as we talk about how to be engaging in long-term planning. And maybe we do put that aside back up. As we, our initial projections right now, as we look at how we will be utilizing fund balances next year, you'll see a plan for, I think it's around eight, eight point one million dollars. If not approaching this tax rate being flat and the additional revenue that will bring in, we're simply just transferring that four million dollars to the additional amounts we would need to take them above out. So we're looking at, we'd be looking at close to about twelve million dollars coming out of fund balance in one year versus the eight. So that's the conversation we're having about that additional four million dollars. Where do we get it? We can get it one way or the other. And so, and I'm, I'm looking forward to engaging the board in conversation about which route we are attempting to take.
Could I ask one other question that, up to the state aid line? I had, I've heard, read all kinds of things and heard all kinds of things about Governor Hochul finally increasing foundation aid to the level it's supposed to be. Is apparently that not going to help us at all? Is or is it not going to happen?
Well, I can, I can speak to that, Pat. So foundation aid, the last board meeting, I had a slide where I broke down all the different types of aid that we get. Foundation aid did in fact go up the three percent that Governor Hochul said, but due to COVID, we were not able to actually utilize our expenditure aids. We didn't use BOSI's like we did. We didn't use transportation like we did. The things that we use transportation for aren't aidable. All those deliveries that we did to students, all the food deliveries, all the material deliveries, our aid went down in a number of areas, which actually took away from the foundation aid increase. So yes, our foundation aid went up. That is nineteen thousand dollars of the total amount of state aid that we receive.
Thank you.
Speaking of transportation and also utility costs, you know, I was hearing just today a really frightening projection of what the cost of gasoline could rise to. So you mentioned Amanda trying to predict these costs. Can you give us some details about that?
So, you know, Liz Burner spoke to that. We, we are we are not ashamed to say that we build in cushions in areas like that, right? Like gasoline. I think Liz increased the gasoline. I think it's a twelve percent increase on that line item. And and we're, we just, we have to do it. I think that we would, it would be terrible if we didn't. I, the utilities were in a consortium throughout the district, so we're actually in a consortium with T S T BOSI's. So there is I, I hate to say the word predictability, but as best we can get, right, in terms of like the the game of numbers, we have that in our side with the utilities piece. So we feel pretty, pretty good about those numbers and those have been vetted by, you know, people much smarter than me and experts in those fields and they're, you know, they, they look at trends and they look at debt and they tell us sort of what that might be. We're doing, I, I think that's why it's so important to the capital project, right, to really make sure that we're switching out controls and boilers and like going to geothermal and like really trying to think not just sustainability and environmental impact, but also impact when costs are rising. You know, to, Pat, I hear you. Like, I, I want, my whole goal is to do no harm to taxpayers, right? Like, I don't want to harm anybody. We also have commitments to keep lights on and pay people and, right? And so it's that delicate balance, again, is in the world of being a business official, to sort of throw out all these different ideas and then for us to come together to talk about them, to say, how do we come to these decisions? Do we agree on that path, on how we got to that decision? And are we then, you know, standing behind that decision? So we're, we're really in the very early stages of sort of, we're lacking in those assumptions, agreeing that that assumption is pertinent at that moment in time, and then moving forward to build the budget around it and then securing the revenue for that.
And Amanda, you're using forward contract pricing for, for large quantities of energy, whether it's, you know, gas and fuel and utilities, but that eliminates some of the severe peaks and troughs, but doesn't eliminate the direction, which is right. So, you know, twelve percent is, you know, everyone knows that price of the pump has gone up much more than that over the last twelve months, right? You know, many, many times that. So able to smooth things out a bit, but certainly there's, there are, there are rising obligations, not only for inputs, but for obviously labor. You know, we have contracts that we need to meet and new contracts that we are finalizing. And it's really it's impossible to offer employees, you know, broadly, not just at school district. Okay, we're going to give you a two percent raise this year. You're gonna not, not going to be able to keep too many folks that way. So we're just, again, dealing with the realities of the ground, the situation, the economy, and trying to thread not a needle, but a path, I guess, right? And just one question, just remind me again what our tax rate is as of last August or this past year.
Yes, so we're at sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents per thousand.
Right, we were, a few years ago, we were certainly eighteen, approaching twenty, but then then we backed off that twenty dollar range, correct?
Sixteen, sixteen dollars and eighty-four cents is about the rate that taxpayers were paying in two thousand and eleven.
Right, going, right, exactly. So we're able to really ratchet back and I believe we are still by far the lowest tax rate in the county, correct? For any school district.
That is correct. I think the closest to us is a little, little higher than us, and that's Cortland County. That's the closest. Everybody else is around twenty-one, twenty-two. We have, we have that data. It's actually right on the county assessor's website. You're more than welcome to take a look. They have all the lists of all the school district taxes. We know, which is the element that we can control. And Pat, you're right, we don't control assessments, but we do, we do not control when pilots are given. We do not control when, you know, new builds are put onto the rolls. What we do control is, you know, we are the taxable entity for the school district and have the authority to bring in revenue to balance our budget.
Oh, thanks, Amanda. And we'll dig into it more. Just looking Moira, others. We've had some folks, I think, drop off, but so so you know you're losing your audience when there's less people on the gallery than there used to be, but, you know, we we're hitting, we're about an hour in. I think we wanted to try to keep it, you know, in that range, so everybody could get some information, you know, get some more personnel onboard, or do whatever we needed to do with the consent agenda. Anything else for the good of the group? Are we, are we good? Dr. Brown, anything else before we let folks enjoy the rest of the week?
Enjoy the rest of the week. It's been good. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for students that were here. Always a pleasure. And Tricia, thank you for running the meeting via Zoom again. We'll be back in person or hybrid the next time we get together, which is in March sometime, right? We have yeah, it's, it's coming up. Well, we have, we have meetings all the time, but we'll get together in March and this is two twenty-two, twenty-two. So everybody was kind of excited about that today. So I'm not sure whether it's, it didn't help the markets at all, but maybe it helps somebody else. And it is isn't it Margarita Day? Is that what I heard? Two Taco Tuesdays and Margarita. It's National Margarita Day. So all the teachers that are out there enjoying some time off, enjoy Margarita on Amanda. Or perhaps better, Dr. Brown. Maybe Dr. Brown, I think, should pony up for that. So you'll be seeing that out there when you're out and about. So enjoy the week and we'll, we'll see everybody next week in some form.
Thank you.